Good evening. I'm Deputy Superintendent John Legrand and I'm filling in for Dr. Kupicki, who is unable to attend tonight's meeting. On behalf of Dr. Kupicki and the Cabarrus County School Board of Education, I would like to welcome everyone in the audience and our viewers on YouTube to the December 5, 2022 work session for the Cabarrus County School Board of Education and officially call the meeting to order. At this time, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first agenda item tonight will be to recognize two of our outgoing board members, Mrs. Carolyn Carpenter and Ms. Holly Grimsley. At this time, I'd like to call our Communications Director, Mr. Phil Furr, to the podium and ask that Ms. Carpenter and any members of her family in attendance to please come forward.
Ms. Carolyn Carpenter has served 16 years on the Cabarrus County Board of Education. Prior to her time on the Board of Education, Carolyn served 12 years as a Cabarrus County Commissioner. She has been a part of school boards that have overseen incredible growth and expansion, adding 16 schools, two early colleges, one virtual academy, and the Cabarrus Health Sciences Institute. Other points of pride during Carolyn's time on the board are the Performance Learning Center, expanding our district's CTE program with 45 career pathways, the district's first K-8 Performing Arts Magnet School, hiring school nurses and school resource officers into all of our schools, and working hard to keep community schools in our communities, most notably Beverly Hills, R. Brown McAllister, and Coltrane Webb, and adding the name STEM to many of those. Carolyn did all that while also finding the time to grow her own knowledge, amassing over 1,200 hours of continuing education credits with the North Carolina School Boards Association. Carolyn always enjoyed being a team player. Her advice to future board members is you can't do anything by yourself, and by working together, the board can make things happen for students and staff. Carolyn says the things she will miss the most are the schools, teachers, and the students. But she's looking forward to continuing to work with Read Across America and says she looks forward to continuing as a volunteer in schools. Carolyn, on behalf of Cabarrus County Schools, I say thank you for your dedicated service to our staff and students, and we wish you nothing but success in the future.
At this time, I'd like to invite Ms. Holly Grimsley to come forward, as well as any
Holly Grimsley served 12 years on the Cabarrus County School Board, two terms as Board Chair. During Holly's service, Cabarrus County Schools added 17 schools. Some of her notable accomplishments include starting the Teacher Liaison Position for the Teacher of the Year, creating a process which brought together Board Chairs and Vice Chairs from school and county government to work together each month, and leading through the pandemic by creating the Task Force that helped get kids back in school. Professionally, Holly chaired the Blue Ribbon Committee in 2003 that mediated between school and county government to improve relations. For her work on that committee, she received a statewide award. In 2010, Holly was elected to Women in Government, and she was also recently chosen to serve on the Hunt Institute to reevaluate K-12 education in North Carolina. Holly is most proud of the work she and her fellow board members have done in conjunction with county commissioners to raise teacher supplements. On behalf of Cabarrus County Schools, I say thank you for your dedicated service to our staff and students and wish you nothing but success in your future endeavors.
to our school district and all the efforts that you have put into your several years of service. Next on the agenda will be the swearing-in ceremony for newly-elected board members Laura Blackwell Lindsey, Pamela Escobar, and Sam Treadaway. I'd like to call the Honorable Judge Marty McGee to the podium to perform tonight's Oath of Office.
Yes, sir.
All right, Manfield, please place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right. Do you solemnly and sincerely swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I will.
And do you swear that you will well and truly execute the duties of the office of Cabarrus County Board of Education member according to the best of your skill and ability, according to law, so help you God?
I will.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Are you ready to take your oath? Do you solemnly and sincerely swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I do.
And do you swear that you will well and truly execute the duties of the office of Cabarrus County Board of Education member according to the best of your skill and ability, according to law, so help you God?
I do.
Congratulations. My job, Judge.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. And Mr. Treadaway, if you'll please join us with your family. Please place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right. Sir, do you solemnly and sincerely swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I do.
And do you swear that you will well and truly execute the duties of the office of Cabarrus County Board of Education member according to the best of your skill and ability, according to law, so help you God?
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Judge McGee, and congratulations to our three board members. At this time, or the next order of business will be to elect our Board of Education Chairperson. At this time, I will open nominations for Cabarrus County Schools Board Chair.
I'd like to make a motion for Denise Adcock.
I'd like to make a motion for Keisha Sandage.
Are there any other nominations for Cabarrus County Schools Board Chair?
I move the nominations to be closed.
Do we need a second? Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second to close the nominations. Second by Mr. Walter. All right. As Denise, as Ms. Adcock was nominated first, we will vote on her first. If you vote for Ms. Adcock to be the School Board Chair, please vote by raising your hand. One, two, three. Since Ms. Adcock did not receive a majority of the vote, we will move to the second nominee. At this time, if you vote for Keisha Sandage to be the School Board Chair, please raise your hand. So we still have a non-majority vote.
What is the interpretation of a no vote? Or a non-vote?
If it's a non-vote, then it is in the affirmative of the first. So the way I would read it... Do you concur with that, Mr. Vogel?
Yes.
So that what, so that if somebody does not vote against and stay silent, then their count is in the affirmative. Since the vote was taken for Mrs. Adcock first, that actually would pass four, that would pass four-three.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Can I ask a question? Just out of curiosity, the option was not given to vote? No, the option was just only in the affirmative.
Correct. So that if there was not, if there was an affirmative in both, you can recount the vote, recast the vote, but if it's a count of no in both, then it would be the affirmative in the first. So it would be a four-three.
Okay.
So with that interpretation, at this time, Ms. Adcock has been elected the School Board Chair. Congratulations, Ms. Adcock. I'm going to turn it over to you at this point.
Okay, with that being said, we will move to 5.02, the election of the Board Chair.
I nominate Keisha Sandage.
So please raise your hand and be recognized. Ms. Escobar?
I nominate Keisha Sandage.
Any more nominations?
Rob Walters.
Okay, Keisha, Sandage, and Rob Walter. So we'll take a vote. All those in favor of Keisha Sandage for Vice Chair, please raise your hand. That's three votes in favor. All those in favor for Rob Walter, please raise your hand. That's four votes. So, Mr. Walter, you are the new Board Vice Chair. Okay, board members, we will take a five-minute break. We are going to reorganize the board and we will return as soon as we get back. Thank you.
Welcome back everyone to the December 5th Board of Education Work Session. Our next agenda item is 6.01 Board Chair Comments. I just really want to take this opportunity to personally welcome our new board members, Mr. Sam Tredaway, Ms. Pam Escobar, and our returning board member, Ms. Laura Lindsay. We're really glad to have you guys on the board. We're excited to be able to partner with you and we look forward to being part of our team. I want to thank the members of the Board of Education for your support and confidence in me to lead our team as the board chair. This designation is a great honor for me and a privilege that I humbly accept. As a leader, one of my favorite anonymous quotes is, "If the plan doesn't work, change the plan but never the goal." One of the goals I have for our board is that we create a space in our meetings and communication with each other where every board member feels four different things: respected, heard, empowered, and valued. We can accomplish this at our meetings by mastering the methods of Robert's Rules of Order in a more comprehensive way. The second goal is that we, as a board, will encourage our CCS teams to find solutions to our problems using innovative and creative methods and that we do not settle for the status quo or use excuses that keep us from addressing our most pressing challenges. Nelson Mandela said it best, "It always seems impossible until it's done." Let us look to our challenges as opportunities for change and greater achievement. The third goal for our board is to inspire greatness within the entire team of the Cabarrus County School System. This includes our educators, our transportation teams, our administrative teams, our support teams, our facility teams, our nutrition teams, our technology teams, and our cabinet team. We have an obligation to lead by example for the 35,000 students, their parents and guardians, and the community of Cabarrus County. Let us not take our positions for granted but come together, united in our resolve, to do what's in the best interest of the children that we have been entrusted to educate. Now more than ever, we need to come together despite our differences and work towards being the best public school district, not only in the state of North Carolina, but in the nation. Thank you. The board will now move to setting the agenda, 7.01, a call for a motion to approve the December 5th, 2022 work setting agenda as presented. Can I have a motion?
Send me.
Can I get a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. So that motion passes.
We have it.
So all those in favor, please vote. Aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Hearing none opposed, that motion passes unanimously. We will move, board members, to 8.01 Signing of the Code of Ethics, and we invite Mr. Jay White, our attorney, to come to the podium.
Thank you, Madam Chair. What you have is according to North Carolina General Statute 160A-86, as well as 115C-47, subsection 57, is a requirement to create a code of ethics. And you have a code of ethics under Policy 2120, is which you all have adopted. And in that is with the new board, you'll be asked to sign a code of ethics, which may be in your packet in front of you. If it's not, I can give you it. But it says, "I, your name, do swear that I will uphold the code of ethics of the Cabarrus County Board of Education to the best of my knowledge and ability. As guidance in the performance as a member of the Cabarrus County Board of Education, I will, number one, obey all applicable state and federal laws regarding official actions taken as a board member; two, uphold the integrity and independence of the board members' office; three, avoid impropriety in the exercise of the board's and board members' official duties; four, perform faithfully the duties of the office; and five, conduct the affairs of the board in an open and public manner, complying with all applicable laws governing open meetings and public records. And then, I, your name, will, number one, attend all regularly scheduled board meetings insofar as possible and become informed concerning the issues to be considered at those meetings; two, endeavor to make policy decisions while always keeping in mind the objective of providing students the opportunity to receive a sound, basic education, and only after full discussion at publicly-held board meetings; three, render all decisions based on the available facts and independent judgment, and refuse to surrender that judgment to individuals or special interest groups; four, recognize the authority vested in the entire board assembled in meeting, and that an individual board member has no legal status to act for or in behalf of the board at any time; five, model civility to students, employees, and all elements of the community by encouraging the free expression of opinion by all board members and engaging in respectful dialogue with fellow board members on matters being considered by the board; six, respect the confidentiality of information that is privileged under applicable law and refrain from disclosure of matters discussed in closed session unless authorized by the board; seven, work with other board members to establish effective board policies and to delegate authority for the administration of the schools to the superintendent; and eight, communicate to other board members and the superintendent expressions of public reaction to board policies and school programs. This is from the Policy 2120, pretty much verbatim, and that is what's being asked to sign tonight. Any questions?
Any discussion, board members?
Thank you.
So after our signature, if you could just pass those down to me, I will give those to Kristy. Okay, board members, we will go to 9.01, which is Budget Amendments, and we'll invite Ms. Carol Herndon to the podium. Good evening, Ms. Herndon.
Good evening, board. I am honored to bring our second budget amendment resolution to you for consideration. And I'll ask Matt if he will first pull up an Excel spreadsheet that I put together right before I came down, based on a question I received earlier today that I thought might help set the context for the budget resolution and amendment process that we manage throughout the course of the school year. I hope that this is helpful. As a reminder, you all approved the initial budget resolution for 2022-2023 on September 19th, 2022, and that was a total budget for our district of $466.2 million. On November 1st, I brought forth our first budget amendment resolution with changes that totaled $3.2 million, and I walked the board through all of the changes that added up to the $3.2 million. And so after you approved budget amendment resolution number one, we were at $469.4 million in total budget for our district. And tonight, I am bringing forth changes that support budget amendment resolution number two totaling $5.7 million. So once approved by the board, we will be managing a budget on behalf of our district of $475.2 million. And we will continue to roll forward our budget and to bring forth to you changes as we receive additional allotments, as we apply for and receive grants, and different appropriations that come to us as normal across the course of the school year. So, thank you, Matt. And we will post this to board docs. It just came to me about 5:05 this evening and thought it might be a bit helpful for some context. So let's jump into then the first attachment here, the actual budget resolution. Thank you. As a reminder, under our new format, we are listing the different funds across the top of the page, and then we are required to summarize our budget resolution and any subsequent amendments by purpose codes. So that's the 5,000, the 6,000, the 7,000, the 8,000 numbers that you see here. And budget, I mean, purpose codes, pardon me, are basically a description of what we're spending money for, if that makes sense. The two biggest buckets for us are student-facing instructional needs and then our instructional support needs. So things that happen in transportation or in the district office, not necessarily facing our students directly, but important to support those who do face our students directly. And you'll see, this just summarizes, as I just indicated, that per our budget amendment number two resolution, we are looking to get your approval for a total $475.2 million. We had about $5.7 million in changes, which I will walk you through. And if we can pull up just for reference, and so you'll have familiarity as we adjust to the new format, the second, hold on, no, pardon me, the third, let's pull up the third attachment first. Thank you. This simply outlines the changes only, so you can see them by fund across the top and by purpose code down the side. And remember, each of these will be constructed where we've got revenues budgeted and expenditures budgeted, and they always have to net to zero. So that's the construct of the amendment documents. So if we'll go now to the document that summarizes, the middle one, there you go. Thank you so much. So if you look at the changes by fund, the majority of our change was driven by the capital outlay fund, also our Kids Plus and Special Revenue Funds. I'll talk about those in just a second. From a state fund perspective, we only had just about $1,100 in changes, and that was due to an additional allotment that we received. The math that the state had done originally to support the allotment to fund our annual principal bonuses that are paid in October was incorrect, so they sent this subsequent $1,100 allotment to correct the error in their initial calculation. So that was recorded in our state budget during this amendment period. All of these figures are as of November 30th, hot off the press, and so we're talking about the end of November. From a local fund perspective, we had no change in budgeted revenues or expenditures at the total line. We did have some transfers between purpose codes, which often happens. We do our best guess when we craft our initial budget to identify where we have the greatest need to spend, but if circumstances change or we are presented with an opportunity, we can make changes between purpose codes, and we bring those to share with you. But from a net perspective, we had no changes in our local budget. From a federal fund perspective, we had four new grants that we received from the federal government during the November timeframe. These are all grants that we have to apply for, that we have to attach a budget to, and we submit those to DPI, and we get approval on behalf of the federal government from DPI. And we had four of those that materialized during the November timeframe, just over $81,000. The big budget amendment for this November time period is additional capital outlay appropriation from Cabarrus County to support the construction at R. Brown McAllister. And so we receive our appropriation for our construction projects across a scheduled time period that we agree with the county of, at the beginning of the appropriation period, but also as we get to the point in time where we need that money, whether it's for additional construction or technology, furniture and equipment. We work through that timeline with the county, and then they release the funds to us according to that timeline. Unless we run into delays or unexpected issues that require us to adjust that timeline, and then the funding follows those adjustments. But you'll see, of our total $5.7 million budget amendment that's in front of you, 5.1 of it is this appropriation from our county to support the R. Brown McAllister project. Both Kids Plus and our Special Revenue Fund, we've talked about these stabilization grants in several meetings in the past. And so we received the revenue for both the stabilization grant for Kids Plus and also for our Mary Frances Wall Center. And so we were glad to actually receive the revenue. We knew it was coming, but it's always nice when we have it in hand. And these are the changes for our November budget amendment number two totaling $5.7 million and taking us to a total budget that we are currently managing of $475.2 million. So this is what I am putting in front of you to approve and hopefully move to consent for next week's meeting. Be glad to answer any questions.
Is there any discussion? If you have a question for Ms. Herndon, if you could raise your hand and be recognized by the board chair, Ms. Escobar?
I don't have a question. I just wanted to say thank you because I was, I think I was one of the people who was confused by some of the things. So I appreciate you reading that email, and then that first chart was very helpful. So, thank you, I appreciate that.
Glad to do it. Any other discussion? Any questions? Okay, we will move this to consent.
Okay, great. Awesome. Thank you very much.
Okay, board members, we will go to 9.02, which is Additional Supplement for Certified Staff. Ms. Herndon is still here at the podium. Welcome back.
Okay, great. Thank you. We had a chance to talk about this back in August and September when we were preparing our initial budget resolution and the fact that our state had again funded an opportunity for us to pay an additional supplement. This is above and beyond the 12% that we pay to our certified staff that is funded by Cabarrus County. And they said it was going to be recurring, but you never know until each year of the state budget is approved. So we were really pleased that they did again approve the opportunity to provide this additional supplement to public school units. And if we can pull up, yep, the, there you go, PowerPoint. Sorry, I just jumped right in. We'll go to number two. Oh, hang on. There you go. So the cool thing is, not only did they fund it again, but they almost doubled the allotment for our district. So we have $2.633 million to consider in granting this additional allotment. We are required to recognize a maximum payment allowed, which would be $932. And that's all information that was mandated by our state. Next slide, please. The state made it clear when they first introduced this opportunity for 2122 that it would be the local boards of education's opportunities or responsibility to determine how to pay this additional supplement, but within parameters. It is intended primarily to go to school-based certified teachers and instructional support personnel. However, APs and principals are eligible to receive the additional supplement as well. It may not be used to provide supplements to district office staff or non-certified personnel. And again, as I mentioned earlier, they continue, the state continues to indicate that this will be recurring funding, but of course, that's always dependent on the availability of funding and the approval of the state budget each year. But I'm really proud of our state and really grateful that they seem to be really dedicated to this, two years in the running and a commitment to continue going forward. So I'm grateful for that. We are bringing forth, and this is a recommendation from Dr. Kapicki and the cabinet and I, to pay $800 an additional supplement, again, above and beyond the 12% that is currently received and funded by our county. And this would be an $800 flat supplement to all school-based certified staff, so that's our teachers and our instructional support staff. And that is consistent with the population that received this additional supplement in 2021, 2022. We granted the same concept to this same group of people last year. Only $475. We were able to almost double that because our allotment received from the state was almost double. I'm so again grateful for that. That is about 2,500 employees, give or take, depends on vacancies, and we'll measure that at the time of payment, which we are recommending be March 31st, 2023. We felt like that was an appropriate time of the year based on when we pay our 12% supplement to this group of folks. They get 6% in November, 6% in June, and we felt like March might be a good time of the year where things are getting a little heavy in schools and folks are getting tired, and we felt like March 31st would be a great time to do that. We will be able to pay this flat $800 supplement to all of our certified staff, teachers and instructional support personnel, along with the district share of FICA at 7.65% and the district share of retirement cost at 24.5% within the allotted 2.633 million. So we're pleased to be able to use almost every penny of that allotment to support an $800 flat rate supplement to all certified staff.
Thank you, Ms. Herndon. Any questions? Are there any questions? Ms. Escobar?
Thank you again. So supplements from the county, that 12%, just to clarify, you said is given out in November and June?
Half in November and half in June, yes.
So is there normally a supplement that's given in December as well?
We've had several in recent years as we've had unique provisions either through federal money or state money, kind of through and coming out of the pandemic, but not, nothing regular. Now, we do pay extracurricular supplements, some athletic supplements, band supplements, some of our extracurricular supplements, but not the county supplement.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions?
I had a question. So you said almost all, so what's left?
Well, it will depend. We have to take our best guess because we won't know who is here to receive it until we get till March's payroll processing. So we gave ourselves a little bit of wiggle room, and by a little bit, $50,000. And we'll, you know, we think it's approximately 2,500 folks. We have turnover, we'll see what it looks like then, and, you know, if for some reason we were fully staffed and, you know, we're a bit over that, we'll have to find a way to fund it. That was not the case last year.
Okay.
We did our best estimate.
So we could be under or over, is what I hear?
Yes, ma'am. We could. We gave back a little bit, but we were at the sweet spot where if you went from $475 last year to $480, you were going to be way over. And so we were just a little shy, but just a tiny bit.
Okay. And just, I want to clarify, so 925 to non-certified and 800 to certified, did I?
No, 800 only to certified.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
We cannot pay it to non-certified or district office.
I saw the 925, so I was trying to clarify.
The 932 is the most we can pay, as set by the state. We are going to pay 800 and be able to leverage that allotment to fund the 800 plus the FICA plus the retirement that we have to pay at the district.
Thanks for your work.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, well, I think it's great news. I mean, it's great news for our teachers and certified staff to have this extra money coming, coming above and beyond what they got last year. So that's good. And I also want to thank you for answering some of my questions that I emailed to you today. But when you add in that 24% and 7%, does that not exceed the 932 number?
Well, the 2,500 is approximate. So whatever we had on our payroll at the time we calculated and recommended the 800, we could well fund it within $50,000. So I can get you by next meeting the exact number of employees that we base that on, as well as the exact number of employees we paid it to last year. At this point, we're giving it our best guess, and I'm confident that we can fund the 800 per.
Yeah, but we're limited to 900, whatever it was, 930 something dollars, was what you said.
932 is the maximum we can pay, as set by the state.
So when you add the 800 plus, plus the retirement, plus the FICA, do you exceed that 932? You don't exceed that?
Correct. They won't, they won't pay for it, right.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay. Do we, everybody agree to move this to consent?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll move to 9.03, Policy Revisions for Approval on Second Reading, and we'll have Ms. Susan Burns to the podium, please. Welcome, Ms. Burns.
Good evening. We have several policies that are up for second read. We had no first-read policies this month. I received a few questions and have emailed and responded. I received a few questions and have emailed and responded to those. So do you want me to read all the policies?
Yes, if you will.
Okay. All right. Policy, make sure I have the right one here. Policy 4050, children of military families. Policy 3420, student promotion and accountability. 3460, graduation requirements. 4100, age requirements for initial entry. 4110, immunization and health requirements for school admission. 4155, assignment to classes. 4400, attendance. 4700, student records. 4300, student behavior policies. 2220, official school spokesperson. 3320, school trips. 4345, student discipline records. 4351, short-term suspension.
Okay, so are there any discussion about these policies? Any policy?
I guess that'll be me. Policy 2220 talks about the official school spokesperson. We've had a lot of discussion, a lot of issues with that. And as I read that policy, it doesn't seem to clarify anything. It just seems to take something out. So I think we probably want to look at that a little bit more in detail exactly what our goal as a board is for being an official school spokesperson. I also noticed we have a director, public information director title. It's essentially our spokesperson, but that's not mentioned in the policy either.
Would you like Mr. Vogel to respond to that tonight?
That's up to the board.
Or do you want to hear from Mr. Vogel?
Sure.
Okay. Mr. Vogel?
Hi, everybody.
Can we put that policy on the screen?
Yeah, a month or two ago, the board asked me to take a look at policy 2220 because there was some confusion and perhaps some ambiguity with respect to the second of the three sentences. I think we're waiting for it to come up.
You may need to extract those. This is still in the zip file.
Okay, good. Okay, so as I was saying, the board asked us to reexamine policy 2220 because the second sentence of the three sentences was a sentence that was unclear, a little ambiguous, and being interpreted by different board members and different people who are not board members in different ways at different times. And so we took a, we took a look at it and determined that that sentence really wasn't necessary in this policy because this policy is about who is the official spokesperson for the board. And as the first sentence states, it's the chair of the board or her designee and the superintendent and his designee. And the third sentence goes on to say how those people should articulate the position of the board. And so the second sentence really didn't seem to further the goal of the policy. And to the extent the second sentence was getting to the point of proper board member conduct and communication, the policy committee felt that policy 2120, the board member ethics policy, which you know quite well because it was just recited to you and you just signed a piece of paper, covers it. That is, covers proper board member conduct and proper board member communication. And this sentence just kind of made things unclear. And so that's where the policy committee came out in recommending the removal of the second sentence of this policy. That's the rationale.
Any other comments? Ms. Lindsey?
So, I mean, we know the reason why this policy was brought back up to the policy board for discussion. So I think to Rob's point, I think the bigger issue was not necessarily the fact that we know who the official spokespeople are, but also not to negate the fact that even as a board member, you do have the right to speak on your own behalf. And so I think that's where a lot of the confusion was with utilizing this policy in a way of saying that because you are speaking to media or whoever you may be speaking to, that as long as you state that you are not speaking on behalf of the board, you're speaking on your own behalf, then this policy cannot be used as a way to potentially censure and/or whatever towards another board member. So I think that was the biggest issue and concern about this policy and how it was reading. So I don't know the best way to correct that just to make sure that we use it in the most efficient way and the way that it was supposed to be used.
Well, I think, if I may respond, I think you fairly described the confusion and the ambiguity surrounding that sentence and the way that it was used or should not have been used or should have been used and used differently. And so the feeling is, yes, board members have the right to speak on their behalf. They're not the official spokesperson of the board unless they are the chair or a designee of the chair. But certainly, any board member can speak his or her mind. And to the extent that their communication is improper, brings disrepute to the board, that may or may not be covered by your ethics code, which you just signed.
Right. So taking out that sentence then is going to hopefully alleviate that being an issue moving forward. And I think, was that the concern that you had, was how do we?
I don't think it defines anything.
Rectify.
It doesn't say that. It just adds to more confusion as you read that. I mean, granted, the statement itself could be confusing, but it doesn't really, to me, when I read it, doesn't really clear anything up as far as that issue.
Ms. Escobar?
I had sent this question earlier. And so would it be possible to delete this sentence, but then possibly add a sentence to clarify saying, which would answer the question that I think Ms. Lindsey's asking and the question I had presented in email, which is each school board member is permitted to speak to the media to represent themselves per ethics policy, you know, whatever the number is. If we add that sentence there, then there's not ambiguity. Is that a possibility?
Well, you as a board can choose to insert any sentence that you want to insert. You might want to consider whether you want to prescribe all the things that you're allowed to do as opposed to just addressing things that you're prohibited from doing because you're allowed to do lots of things under the Constitution and law.
Any other discussion? Mr. Walter, what would you like to do?
I'd like to have it up next week again to discuss again, but consider something to the effect that any board member, employee, volunteer or volunteers sharing school-related information shall clearly indicate that they are not acting in their official capacity and shall refrain from expressing their personal views while on duty, is what I had put or suggested to the committee. Again, I'm not a wordsmith on it, but that it seemed to clear a little bit something up. But again, so just what I, my comment really is, just by deleting that sentence, didn't really clarify that policy or help us, in my opinion, helped us resolve anything.
So it is at the pleasure of the board to take this off the consent agenda and put on the action agenda?
Just takes one.
Okay. Any other comments about any other of the policies, board members that are listed? So we will move to send the policies to the consent agenda except for 2220, which will be put on action. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move to 9.04, 2023, 2024 academic calendar revisions. Good evening, Ms. Reeves and Ms. Burns.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Mr. Legrand. I am here today to present a slight edit in terms of a recommendation for our school calendar for the 2023-2024 school year. And so as you can see in the attachment, we are recommending moving the first day of school from August 9th to August 10th. And this is simply to be able to provide teachers with ample time to be able to set up their classrooms, prepare for open house. And our intent is to host a second RISE, which, as you may know, is the Staff Back to School Professional Development, where we bring all of our elementary and secondary teachers together to be able to promote professional development and build teacher efficacy through them being able to present amongst their colleagues. So in order to be able to do that, simply because of the shortened summer this year and the lesser amount of days on the front end of the calendar, we are asking for the additional consideration of one workday to be able to provide that support for our teachers.
Are there any discussion, board members, about the calendar?
Can I move this to the action agenda versus the consent? Just in case, I just need to do more research on it.
We can.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
So are we losing it school day for this?
We are, we are losing one school day based on the preliminary calendar, but we are still well within calendar law, still over the hours. So it still keeps us in a safe place in terms of hours of instruction.
Right. So it's one less day than we had before. And then my other question is, why didn't we follow the standard procedure that we do that we have a calendar committee review this before it comes to the board? Don't we normally do that?
Well, the, the board has already approved this calendar, so any, any minor changes like that can come directly to the board.
Yes, it's a whole, but it's a day.
Yes, it's one day.
Yeah.
It may impact somebody.
If they would bring up the traditional calendar attachment.
I'm just saying, it's a little more just moving one day, switching two different days, you're actually losing an instructional day for the students by the.
One instructional day, yes, sir. But again, the way the calendar was drafted, we built in additional hours of instruction. So they're still in seat time longer than other counties based on that.
Any other questions? Any discussion?
I'm wondering if next month, it sounds like you have a plan.
Yes, sir.
I would like to kind of see in broad brushstrokes what that plan is for those days.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd be happy to.
That would be helpful for me. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, if there is no further discussion, then we will move that to the action agenda instead of the consent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, board members, we will move to 9.05, the local articulation agreement with RCCC. And we will invite Rusty Parker to the podium. Good evening, Mr. Parker.
An articulation agreement between the school system and the community college is an arrangement that allows students to receive college credit for courses they've taken in high school. As part of the agreement, students who meet certain criteria in their CTE courses may be eligible to receive credit at the community college for that course, which, me being a parent, that's a fantastic opportunity. I want my children to do that. I think everybody should. This process is usually managed by the state level, at the state level by the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction and the Community College Systems Office. But for courses that are outside the state-level agreement, school systems can create a local articulation agreement with their community college. The agreement that I shared with you in the agenda that you have is our local articulation agreement between our school system and Rowan Cabarrus Community College. The agreement includes our advanced manufacturing courses that are taught at J.M. Robinson High School. And students in the Academy of Engineering and Automation who take the CPT or the Certified Production Technician credential may be able to receive articulated credit at the community college. And I'm requesting that this be on consent for next Monday, but I will take any questions if you have them.
Any questions, board members? Any discussion? Ms. Escobar?
Thank you so much. So to just make it clear, the benefit of this is, is that kids taking courses in our schools will get college credit.
They will, free.
And we want to spell that out and make that happen.
And we will promote this more and more, which is why we're doing this agreement.
Sounds great. Thank you so much.
Mr. Walter?
Okay, but we've, we've had a reference to this agreement in the community college agreement for a number of years. I've just never seen this one presented to the board. So there is, has one, there has been one? This is a modification of it or is?
This is really our first local articulation agreement. And the reason that we put this in place is because the state agreement has not been renewed. There is a team of people at the state level that's worked, that are working on an articulation agreement to update it. Because now, I think the one we have now doesn't include credentials or performance-based measures or anything like that. So they're working to do that, but right now, we do not have one. So a local school district are allowed to do this in place of that.
Which is a good thing, but it starts as of when? Is it retroactive to the beginning of the year?
It started this school year.
So if they took it before, they may not get credit for it, but if they take it this year, they do?
My goal was to have it done before we do exams because really, students will take the CPT that's from that advanced manufacturing course in January. So as soon as they take that, they'll be eligible to go to the community college and get credit for that. And it's lined up with their Mechatronics pathway. So if you look at the document that I attached, it says at the bottom of page one about the Certified Production Technician Level 1, it lines up with their class ISC 132.
And the grading and all that stuff, that's all standard.
They have to have a B in their class in the high school level, and then they have to pass the credential.
Sounds good to me. Thank you for the work on it.
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion, Mr. Far?
Yeah, I'd like to say thank you for.
Yes, sir.
I mean, we, we improve this CTE every year. And, you know, I've been in manufacturing most of my life in this county. So this is just going to be nothing but positive. And continue, just let's keep it going. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Anything else, board members?
You know how much I love the CTE program. So thank you so much for all of the hard work that you do. You guys are wonderful.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Parker.
Have a good evening.
Ms. Sanders?
Sorry, I was just going to put a plug out there for our DECA needs judges. So can you just tell us just a little bit about that? So we, I'm not sure if we have all the judges we need.
Thank you for bringing that up. We have a regional DECA event coming up on December the 13th. And so we do need judges because the DECA is an amazing program. It's aligned with our marketing courses. But they have a great CTSO with a lot of kids, and we can't judge them all by ourselves. So if you're interested, please let me know, and I'll tell you how to get set up to judge. Thank you for bringing that up.
Okay, board members, we will put this on the consent agenda. We'll move to, before we move to the German, I'd really just like to say I'd like to thank everyone for your work today as a board. I really hope, as you leave this meeting, that you feel respected, heard, empowered and valued. The work we're doing together is important, and I thank you for all your participation. We want to welcome again our new board members, Mr. Sam Tredaway, Ms. Pam Escobar and Ms. Lindsey. So thank you with that. In hearing that, we'll move to 10 points. Oh, you've got something? Okay.
Clear, I was, I was, been looking, along with Mr. Vogel, we've been looking at 2342. And 2342 talks about, in all cases, if a member abstains from voting after failing to be excused by majority of vote, majority vote of the remaining members, the abstention shall be recorded as an affirmative vote. That is what I was looking at and thinking about when, when it was asked about Mrs. Blackwell not voting, either in the affirmative or the negative, either for the earlier chair or not. I would ask to, that you retake the vote to make certain that it is, to it gets a majority of four votes in the affirmative. That's what would be the cleanest way to do it. And looking at the Roberts Rules of Order also, again, it talks about abstaining, and there was no abstention. To abstain means not to vote at all. And a member who makes no response if abstentions are called for abstains just as much as one who responds to the effective. So what happens is I would ask that you retake the vote to make certain that there is a majority of four, to make certain it's clear to the public that this is the majority of the, of the board.
Okay, so I will turn that over to Mr. Legrand.
Mrs. Blackwell, you have a question?
So I just want, I've never done a vote before where there was not an option to vote no.
Well, so that what he would do is call for a vote ayes and call for a vote noes.
Okay.
If there is a, if there continues to be a three-four noes, then y'all need to talk about what y'all are going to do about the chair.
Got it.
So, Mr. White, just for clarification, we don't take nominations, we go with the two nominations?
You have, right now, you go for the two.
Okay.
You vote for Mrs. Adcock, yea or nay, and then depending on that vote, then you go with Mrs. Sande, jay or nay? Because that's, what happens is?
Typically, there's a nomination and a second to get that person out.
It's not when you're talking about a nomination from position, from, a nomination for the floor for a position, but let me pull that up for you. So under Robert Rules of Order, Chapter 1546, six nominations from the floor. Under the procedures of nominations from the floor, the chair calls for nominations at the time established by rule or custom of the organization or assembly, unless, but in any case, is subsequent to the report of the nominating committee. There is no nominating committee here. The chair, unless the bylaws or a special rule of order provides otherwise, the chair must call for further nominations at the session at which the election is held, even if nominations were called for at a previous session. That's what he did. A member need not be recognized by the chair to make a nomination unless he or she wishes to speak and debate on the same. Let's see. No second is required, but sometimes one or more members will second a nomination to indicate endorsement. And I'm finding that under 466, about midway through. Where more than one person is to be elected to an office such as a board of directors or to a position such as a committee, no one may nominate more than one person. That is not the case here. So it would be a call for, I nominate, and that was done for Mrs. Adcock, and then the repair, the chair, in this case, Mr. Legrand, would say, Mrs. Adcock is nominated, are there further nominations? That's when Mrs. Sandage was nominated by Mrs. Escobar. Then what happens is a vote is taken, and then there's a call for vote. It's called for vote as it relates to how it is first, how the names are raised from the floor, which would be Mrs. Adcock first, and then Mrs. Sandage. So at this point in time, it would be a call for vote as it relates to Mrs. Adcock for chair in the affirmative and in the negative. And depending on what that vote is, then you go to the next vote, which would be to Mrs. Sandage in the affirmative or to the negative. If by chance it is three-four for Mrs. Adcock, three-four for Mrs. Sandage, then there can be another call for nominations, for additional nominations or continued vote.
Thank you, Mr. White. So as Ms. Adcock was nominated first, we will vote on her first. If you vote for Ms. Adcock to be the school board chair, please raise your hand at this time. One, two, three, four. So having received a majority vote, Denise Adcock is elected as the school board chair.
Okay, can we go to adjournment now? Is that, okay. All right.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, board members, so we are going to adjourn the meeting, and Mr. Fur has put a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Walter has seconded it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the motion passes unanimously, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.